Okay. Good? I'll call the meeting to order for twenty-second, twenty twenty-four at five thirty P M. Mayor Levine is out, so I will be taking over as acting mayor for this meeting. And I want to welcome Billy Fowler to the front desk.
Oh, thank you.
She's here for taking some notes because she will be after next council meeting, three minutes. As Beth would be at school. And we have some curbs to raise to discuss too, so I'm going to help you do it.
Counselor Levine, can we do roll call?
Yes.
Counselor Morris?
Present.
Counselor Jibery?
Present.
Counselor Levine?
Present.
Counselor Thompson is not able to attend today, however, is watching us via YouTube. And as you said, the mayor doesn't want to come.
Okay. Start for the prejudications.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions to the agenda?
None.
Okay. Public forum, nobody here to speak. The consent agenda. The motion will be to approve the consent agenda as listed. The following items will be enacted by one motion unless a council or citizen of the city of Puyallup requests it to either be considered separately. Six point one, approval correction of minutes of the regular meeting held March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four. Six point two, approval of claims to be paid total of ninety-three thousand, five hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty-three cents. Six point three, approve police chief Whitney, Danaporn, and William Williams to attend Taser training April first, twenty twenty-four, cost of three hundred and fifty dollars each at the Ataskap County Sheriff's Office in Grand Rapids, Minnesota. Six point four, group court members to attend the Minnesota Municipal Books Institute cost of one thousand, two hundred and six dollars to Holiday Inn in St. Cloud, Minnesota on May sixth through tenth, twenty twenty-four.
Counselor Levine, that is not three fifty each, it's total.
Oh, say speech.
I know.
Okay. All right, is there any discussion on the consent agenda?
No.
Is there a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Set.
Motion by Counselor Jibery supported by Counselor Morris to approve the consent agenda as read. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Appearances? We have Ellie Murphy with S E H Engineering to review the project status report.
Oh.
Welcome, Ellie.
Thank you. Good afternoon, you think, whoever you guys call Sunday. In your back is just a written summary of kind of everything that both Matt and I have been discussing over, well, since the last council meeting. The main one to note would be for kind of your citywide structure improvements project, which would be for all those red roads on the map behind Counselor Levine there. There is a new funding application open, two of them actually, for Senators Bo Schar and Smith. And those are due this Friday at five P M. So recommend applying for those, that is something that we will do on your guys' behalf if you would like.
So that's two different brands?
They are two different brands, but likely they probably only get one.
Okay.
Some of them involve applications.
Okay. So we should have two, that's all we said.
I was gonna say one, I have another resolution.
Yeah, one or two.
I'm into it, okay.
So the one we have is more.
The second one will be more.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, the second one will be.
Levine for clover. Sorry.
Okay.
Does anybody have any questions on the proposal to update on the engineering? Um, I do on the spire building. What, um, it says S E H Michael Larson is available to assist with plumbing. Like, what, like, what's the status of that right now with delays and everything? Are they still looking for the city to purchase it or what?
I'm not sure what the status of that is. We have not been involved in funding.
Um, are we still waiting on the inspection?
We have council approval to go ahead with an inspection. And then we apply to the Blandon Foundation for funds that would pay for the inspection.
Right.
And I have not heard if we've received the funds at this time.
Okay, so it's kind of, we're gonna hold it kind of inspection. The wastewater treatment plant decommissioning, I guess I'll bring that up now since it's on your list. We have to kind of get moving, there are a few items in the packet further down that will need to be discussed. But we have to work on that decommissioning and, um, I did talk with Paul Christiansen today. They're going to start some dewatering, but we need to get the beds shut, we need to get those done. So once those are done, they can do the dewatering and then start pumping, which we'll have to get Rapid Goober back to work on that. And then, um, also he was going to look at maybe getting some more pumps so that it's not going to be as timely, you know, takes as long as it did the last time. The rate is still one hundred dollars an hour. So, um, I really don't feel, I think anybody does want to have another sixteen thousand dollar bill. Um, so we really need to focus in on this and, um, get those beds taken care of quickly and then start moving on to taking care of that. And I don't know if there's any ITRR funding that we can get anymore to help with that or.
Talk, we have to talk to them, I can see what our options are.
Okay.
So do we need a directive to have the street crew do the beds?
Do the beds, yes. I would recommend that we have a motion to get that done ASAP.
Have they been doing it since last?
Please, yes, um, two beds, I think, last five.
Okay.
So, but they need to get them cleaned out and then, I mean, now if it's gonna rain, it's gonna be electric and heavy and.
Okay.
But yeah, we need to get that moving. So, yes, if you'd like to entertain motion with that.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to direct the street crew to clean up the beds.
I'll support it.
There's a motion on the floor to direct the street department to clean up the beds at the wastewater plant. Supported by Morris, supported by Jibery.
Thank you.
Do you want to put a date on that?
Um, I mean, it's kind of dependent on whether, so, um, I didn't, I haven't looked at the weather to see what it's supposed to be like, but, I mean, I would just add in there ASAP. I mean, we know, we all know it's something that needs to get done and we need to be proud of the sense of the time that we put on when we're still, we don't have another sixteen thousand dollar bill, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. And I guess, um, yeah, once we get that done, we can start scheduling more of the DPS when we get Rapid Goober and get that working.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Um, are there any motions to accept these resolutions? Well, we only have one, but with a directive to do another one?
Thank you.
Yeah, so let's do them separately. I make the motion to accept, um, a resolution approving S E H to apply for intercept funds for congressional directives that may apply twenty twenty-five in congressional directed spending Senator Tina Smith.
All support?
I was seeing if Ellen was, I was in favor or not, that's what I mean.
Is there any other discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And then we'll need one more.
Yeah, and then I'll make the same motion, adopt a resolution approving S E H to apply for intercept funds for congressional directed spending applied twenty twenty-five congressional directed spending for uh, U S Senator Amy Cuthbert. All support?
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Any other questions here, Ellie?
Um, all right, a second.
Sounds good.
Thanks, Ellie.
Just as a heads up, I will be off to town for the next council meeting, not my eighth, but I'll make sure to coordinate that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Unfinished business. Eight point one, discuss O'Brien Resistor Construction Contract Bid.
Uh, Counselor Levine? I spoke with Alan from Benchmark and they are in the process of, it's a D S W was making some um, changes to the contract right now to not later have changeovers. So Alan will be at the May eighth meeting to go over the contract with you guys.
Okay. So we don't need any action on that?
Not at this time.
Eight point two, discuss cleanup days, Counselor Jibery?
Okay, I'll give a quick, quick overview here. So, um, I have been in contact with Randy Ott from Waste Management, he's been fabulous. Um, Waste Management will be giving us four dumpsters, um, free of charge as a donation uh, to the citywide cleanup event. Uh, also going to be working with Bassbrook Recycling Auto Cohasset, that's the official location on just regarding the scrap piece of it. Um, still have some more connections to make, but Randy sent over to me today a list of acceptable and unacceptable items, I will get that to the ladies in the office to be able to go out with the bill, I'll forward it today. Um, so that list is pretty clear, um, there's a few other questions that I still have to get, but as of right now, I'm just looking for the council to approve uh, having the cleanup days for a shorter period of time this year from May seventeenth and eighteenth, both a Friday and a Saturday. Um, I do still have to reach out to the street supervisor to find out about location and all that good stuff, but um, general waste will, our waste management will deliver to us on May sixteenth and pick up on the twentieth. So, we're, it's going to be much different than it was, uh, the last couple of years because we don't have, um, the funding that we have in years past, uh, under Ataskap County. So that's where we're at right now. Any questions?
I do.
Sure.
Um, will somebody be down there man, um, manning it? And you've set up that part, Marshall?
I haven't set up any of that yet, but I will.
Okay. Okay.
So, uh, yeah, so that's a good question, Beth, so it does require somebody to be down there to man. I don't know, um, if we're going to go back to the location that we were at before or if we're going to go down to the cold stair storage area. I'm hoping that, um, street supervisor Sunquist can provide some insight on that. In the past, our scrap pile has gotten very large. And so I don't anticipate that it would fit over here. We need to be on a locked gate and yes, it does need to be, um, monitored. In the past, we've done the curbside pickup, that will not be something that we're doing this year. Like I said, um, like I said, Ataskap County, um, there's no funding there, uh, working with Greg Stoltz in the past. And so the four dumpsters that we have are the four dumpsters that we have. So I still have to reach out to general waste. Um, and then there's a couple, a couple other people too, but I still think it can be, uh, successful. I'm still excited about it. Um, yeah, and that's all I really got right now. So it's in the making, but I'm hoping to get something out. What's the date today?
Twenty-second.
When do the bells go off?
Between the first and third.
The twenty-third?
Between the first and third.
Oh, sorry, I was thinking, twenty-third, what? Um, to get a flyer, so everybody knows.
To get these stuffs in the bills.
I have a question, so we have four dumpsters, is it just four items? Is it have to be sorted like before or how was that?
Yeah, it does have to be sorted for the most part. And that's where, um, in the past, this is going to restrict our ability to take the type of items that we had in the past. Um, I've been, I've been in a, I've had quite a few conversations with Chief Whitney, um, kind of some of the details and the ins and outs about what we could offer to residents, but nothing is firm up yet because it doesn't, it doesn't rely on volunteers. Um, just for the sake of conversation, we also still have, um, money available to us from the years prior. And then with this day of action, there's some overlap and some suggestions that have come from Sarah Carle to enhance our cleanup days as well, so. Two different, two different events, but nonetheless, the same thing, it's, it's helping residents, so.
Okay, well, thank you for organizing all that.
Mm-hmm.
So that being said, since we are doing two times a year the brush pickup for residents, would it be a good idea to schedule that like the thirteenth to the eighteenth then?
I think so. On a, a week or a month?
On a, yeah.
And I will say, so it's the city crew that's picking up the brush, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
If they put on the boulevard or in the alley or wherever, then they'll drag around that week and pick up the brush.
So regardless of where we're located, it won't impact anything? I'm just thinking about the downstairs system.
So.
So it would be good, okay, yeah.
Okay.
I think that's a good.
Okay, I'll make a motion then to set, uh, brush pickup for Monday, May thirteenth to Friday, May eighteenth, with the city crew.
And also the board. That Friday, May seventeenth?
Sorry, sorry.
We need a motion for the seventeenth and eighteenth.
Yeah, let's finish this one first.
Okay, so is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So then let's set a mo, I'm going to get a motion to approve the cleanup days for May seventeenth and eighteenth.
I'll, I'll make a motion to set the cleanup days for May seventeenth and eighteenth.
I'll sign it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Eight point three, discuss day of action June fourteenth, twenty twenty-four in the city of Puyallup.
Oh, do you want me to take this one? Uh, so, uh, Jamie Jolton is from Ataskap County Habitat for Humanity, um, and myself went around with our builders, she stepped her building up and then I have, uh, a guy from my crew, Randy, um, we went around and canvassed the houses and took pictures today to prioritize the list. Um, United Way Day of Action, went around with Carissa, um, and Sarah from SITA, and then Jamie again. And, um, did some canvassing of the residents that were interested, so I think we're getting a pretty good idea. And then St. Louis, St. Louis United Way Day of Action, Heather, will organize the volunteers. So there will be something in the bill, I believe, right? Are we doing a pamphlet in the bill? Okay, so there will be something in the utility bill for United Way Day of Action, um, for volunteers that you can sign up and, uh, that if you're still interested in, um, projects being done. So, uh, we're, we're pretty maxed out of projects, I think it's worth a call, but we're going to end up prioritizing that list. We have a lot of city business and residential properties that we address, so. It's going to kind of depend on how many volunteers we get to, or, um, and a lot of it just depending on the labor intensity of what we're asking for, so. But it's moving forward, uh, it sounds like it's going to be extremely successful, so it'll be good, it's, it'll be good.
Is there any other questions about, any action?
Yeah, if anyone has a question, they can come in and ask the girl living in office or they can call me or Beth, we send them to you, that's fine, so.
Thanks for setting that up, really amazing about.
Yeah.
How many residential's?
Uh, anywhere from twelve to fifteen per residential themselves. And so typically, when we do, when they do day of action, it's usually fifteen projects altogether, which is residential, commercial, and city government. So it's going to be bigger than that, um, so we're hoping that we do get enough volunteers, so.
So anybody who wants to volunteer?
Somebody who wants to volunteer?
Okay, eight point four, adopt a resolution to appoint Counselor Morris to the Agribank Service Joint Powers Board. So just a little update, I believe at our last meeting, we had talked about the Agribank Service and, uh, nobody wants to see that go away, so we decided that we would, we agreed to join the Joint Powers Board and, um, Counselor Morris graciously agreed to be the liaison for us.
I mean, it kind of makes sense, seeing as how we work with them a lot, so.
Um, are there any updates on that lately?
No, the next meeting is not wasted.
I know.
It's at time, it's at three.
Okay.
So then they can write it down first, but.
Yeah.
No, there has not been a meeting since our last council meeting, so if not, I saw them anything.
Okay. So I guess, um, I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution appointing Counselor Morris.
And I will support, um, with, there's, oh, I'll put it here. That, just a little thing for you to fix.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Right. Opposed? Motion carried. Eight point five, discuss the proposed Eastern Ataskap Joint Sewer Board Bylaws, attorney Lindsay.
So, so we have received, uh, the bylaws. Um, I understand that, um, uh, obviously I reviewed them and I think I issued my opinion at the last council meeting that really those bylaws, there was nothing wrong with them, they were acceptable. Um, I understand that the legal is way in, it's come to the same conclusion that there's nothing really wrong about, uh, the bylaws. The issue I think that I raised last time in, in the opinion that I continue it, that I've spoken, uh, briefly to, uh, Attorney Borland about it, is really nothing right about those bylaws either. There are certain aspects of the bylaws as it relates to voting and the operation of that joint power authority that really can, even don't conflict directly, but confuse the issues that, of some of the powers and some of the, um, management strategies that are created in the joint power agreements. Under the joint power agreement, there are certain decisions and certain things that are supposed to come before the councils of all of the participants propose to be sent back. Those things really aren't provided for in the bylaws. And so, um, I suggested that we should include those things and then work with them. I mean, as they drafted, would they hurt us? No, but they wouldn't really help us either.
Okay, and I guess I had a question on, I mean, obviously it's in the joint powers agreement, but as far as who's appointed and how many from each, you know, locality and that's not in here and I don't know, I mean, it's in there, but it.
And if I may, it's in the joint power agreement?
Mm-hmm.
And I think the bylaws present a really good opportunity for us to try and sharpen that a little bit to make clarity out of something that's a little bit. And that's one of the things that I've spoken about and that we're working.
So it's still a work in progress.
So we don't have to take any actions. So it's good. Any other questions on what, bylaws? Eight point six, discuss the letter terminating the E I G S B employee facilitating Kewattin lift station by May first, twenty twenty four. Attorney Lindsay.
Thank you. So, um, I have reviewed this, uh, this situation and I understand, speaking with Court Mackey, that we've got a plan in place to cover ourselves. Um, but this, for me, this kind of creates and highlights some of, or highlights some of the issues with the joint power board. So we have been receiving some billing, uh, as part of our quarterly, uh, O M and R that has to do with these employees. And that comes through the joint power authority. And what I understand is we've received a letter from, or a notice from the city of Nashwauk directly saying that, that this service was no longer going to be provided. And the question then becomes, if the city of Nashwauk can unilaterally terminate this service that we are receiving without any action by the joint power authority, which I understand there's been none on this topic, then how are we being billed through the joint power authority for the provision of this service? If it's a service of the joint power authority, which could be billed to the city as part of the O M and R, then it should have been an action of the joint power authority to, to eliminate or to talk with us about eliminating this service. If it's something that the city of Nashwauk can do unilaterally, we never had an agreement with the city of Nashwauk to repay them or have included as part of our joint, joint power, uh, financial responsibility to pay for these services. So it, it kind of seems like somebody here is, is kind of gaining the benefit of both worlds.
So, all right, so I have a question on the letter. Why would the M P C A be contacted? Number one. We'll keep an eye to that. And secondly, why, if we got money as grants or whatever, why is that saying kind of a violation of that's our plant and, or our lift station, we have to monitor because we got the money? Why, why is the M P C A involved with that verbiage?
I think that they contacted the M P C A for clarification on who actually owns the lift station in Kewattin. There's two things there. Then through that discussion, then they also discussed, um, well, if they own it, they should possibly maintain it. But that's not what the, um, M P C A is saying. They say, yes, you own it and you receive funds for it. But oftentimes in a joint project such as this, you have a, what would be the word, agreement that?
I mean, an understanding or as part of the joint power authority.
That they would maintain it because.
So we see that.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, we, so then I contacted the M P C A. They were very nice. We are not in any violation at all. They understand we're a joint, um, project. They also understand that we do not have a licensed person at this time. And you're going to talk about that a little bit later, but, um, it's unfortunate that this didn't go through the East Atasca Joint Sewer Board.
So why didn't it?
I just received that letter. I don't know why it did not.
So it just, I have a question. It just, this just seems to me, and I, maybe I'm just going to hear a little bit. This seems like direct retaliation to all the other conversations that we had. This is just pulled out of the air? Like this is, this is ridiculous. I don't understand why the agreement can't be followed. I mean, is that wrong to think that? I, I, this just comes out of all the other, we request documents. We go over there for a meeting, we ask questions, and the more questions we ask, of all the times that this has been discussed, this has never, ever been brought up, ever, since we asked question. I have a problem with that.
Yeah, the, the language of the joint power agreement does say that each municipality will continue to own and operate its own, uh, infrastructure. But if we take that rule and apply it evenly here, the city of Nashwauk owns the entire water tree to the treatment plant. And I mean, it, it, it becomes a very sticky situation.
So we wouldn't owe them anything. We wouldn't have to pay them for anything like that.
Well, we have certain financial obligations.
Right.
But the, the language is until the joint power board, uh, by formal action, takes on responsibility for operating some portion of it, each city is responsible for its own operation.
But why is it just coming down now?
Right.
It's coming up a year, we've met in the office.
Since office.
And this just decided to come up now.
So then why don't they tell us and argue that they're working on a lot for our lift stations?
May make girls a recommendation. Would it be okay for the attorney to be directed to write them a letter and clarify?
Yeah. When is the next meeting?
May twenty first.
When is it?
May twenty first.
I'm reading the twenty first.
No. Will the mayor be able to attend that one, I think? Should be, okay.
It's giving me a block in my calendar.
Yeah, I think so.
I know.
Okay. That would be good, thank you. Yeah, I'm kind of confused because this is like a letter from the M P C A, but then it's actually from city administrator of Nashwauk. Um, giving us recommendation on who we should hire and to take care of our lift station. So, yeah.
Can I ask one last?
Yes.
Just for the, is it, is the, are these conversations that have been discussed during their meetings?
When I went back through, when I went back through the council or the meetings of the joint sewer, there was a discussion between April and their city engineer regarding ownership of our plant and, uh, permitting in which, that happened two times. But nowhere in their minutes does it say, um, we're changing things and, and they're no longer facilitating this plant.
Okay. Yeah, because doesn't it have to come from there first?
Their board.
Their board.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Like if we, if we don't, you know, if we continue to just do whatever the heck we want and not follow the.
Protocol.
Protocol, then what are we doing? Why, why is it created to begin with? That's, that's. And that's what you want, but these things don't just magically appear. It just doesn't work because this puts us in a bind because we didn't plan for this person. So we don't have a person that can do this.
Right.
So we have, we are left high and dry. I mean, I just think that's, I just.
So if this meeting isn't until, you know, nineteen, whatever, the twenty first, what are we going to do as of May first? Are they like, we're done, we're not coming because according to the letter, they're done? So how are we going to stop training?
That is why I got on the telephone and called the M P C A to find out if Wayne Labine's license was still active. And Wayne thought his license ended December thirty first of twenty twenty three. And she said, no, it does not. His goes through the twenty fourth. And I asked if they would allow Wayne to be contracted with the city for every day, two of our city people go down and work under him for an hour? Would that account for the licenser that they need a year under a licensed person before they can take the test?
Right, because the reason that Jason was doing that is because he went and purposely got licensed to run this plant because knowing that we didn't have anybody to do this. So that's even more irritating is you knew the position that we were in. And, I mean, that's just lack of respect for, like.
Okay.
That's irritating. So we have, we'll do that first part and then.
So, um, regardless, if, if they cut the ties with us maintaining our plant, we still have to get someone licensed here.
Mm-hmm, right.
And whether we contract with People Services and have them come back and pay that amount of money and the mileage, or we do this other option, I don't know of another option. We are in, you know, a bit of a, we need to move forward on our licenser and work things out with Nashwauk, but I don't know if there's a reason they don't want to come over here or not.
Okay, so we're going to accept this as of May first or we're just going to wait? Because that's, I'm thinking it would be nice just to, I'd rather wait until we have a meeting and.
I could, I could, if I may, I could write a letter to see if they would postpone this action, continue, uh, the status call as it exists until the next joint, uh, joint sewer board meeting. I can't promise that they will. I mean, if they, if their position really is the way that it feels, they may just say no, but.
But where's the authority? They don't have it.
There's none.
So if you don't have the authority, how can you do it?
Well, their authority would be, i- in order for them to have authority to change the way the operation occurs, they will have to acknowledge that the joint power authority is not the one in control of this service. And if that's the case, then the city of Kewattin membership received a bill for that service. They have to choose one or the other.
So was he coming over here every day and emptying the bag?
Yes.
He was, in the bar screen, okay.
Ineffective, as soon as we got this letter, then I asked, um, Mike Placedit to also shadow him and see what he, he does. And he agreed to that. And he was going down there up until.
Okay. Okay, so, uh, so we should have a motion then to allow the attorney.
I'll make a motion to direct Attorney Lindsay to send a letter to Nashwauk regarding the. Um, the.
Lift station, Kewattin lift station.
Yeah, the lift station or monitoring. And whether that be for the postponed until the next sewer meeting, joint sewer meeting.
Just for.
I'll support.
Any other discussion?
Not very good. Oh, favor? Aye.
Close motion carried.
Spoken, nah. Do we have a backup thing?
Okay, so, yeah. Now we'll go to eight point six. Um, so Wayne Labine has his license, which that's been checked on. And that has been to the end of the year. So he would train two employees, which I recommend that we have both employees getting their license for the collection system rather than one. Um, so Brody Erickson and Mike Placedit would train under Wayne. She's offered to do it for five hundred dollars a month. And I know, going back to last year, this was brought up in January. And, um, it was not approved at the meeting. And I believe the, um, street supervisor Sunquist was going to take care of things and make sure that this happened because we needed to get the training done and we needed to get the schooling in and everything else within the year. Um, nothing has happened. So we're in the predicament that we're in now because of the letter that we received from Nashwauk. So, um, People Service would come and do it. He didn't give me a solid quote. Um, he just threw a number out there, but, uh, he said a hundred and forty a week. But he is not having his people come here on the weekend if it rains. He's not having anything to do with it. So if she goes to Key Tac, which it only twice a week, he wasn't sure if they would help with manholes and all that. It doesn't sound like it. If they do, I'm sure it would be more. Um, they would work under the license, but, um, under paragraph, she has license. But, um, he's not taking upon the weekends or stormy two AM calls or anything like that. Secondly, the bar screen bag has to get changed daily. He said, we cannot let it go. So our staff needs to be on top of that. The bar screen should have some maintenance done. Not sure if that's been done lately or not. Um, so that's another thing. Those are two other items that, uh, he was concerned with. Also with the manholes, there, we did have an issue with the claim on basement. Those manholes need to be checked. They need to have record of everything they do. If we don't have a record of the maintenance on the manholes, we'll end up in the same predicament that we did the last time and end up having to clean again. Um, so they need to keep records of all of that. Flushing hydrants does not consider prostitute having experience in collection systems. Flushing hydrant is water. That is not in the collection systems. Um, I believe that was a comment from our street supervisor regarding, uh, background on this qualification. You have to have a licensed operator to do the training. Um, what else? I guess that's, um, you know, and then it goes back to the decommissioning as well, so. It kind of all starts together. So I, I would recommend that we approve Brody Erickson and Mike Placedit to work under Wayne Labine and get their training in. Um, there is training in Rapids, Grand Rapids in July, that they should go to some classes over there. And otherwise, I think in Nislock or something, Brainerd area in November.
In November.
They won't be able to test, but they can take their, you know, they can get their training in. So I guess that's all I have to say. If anybody else has questions or comments or.
Any other question? Hold on.
So I, I wanted to just jump in here because I know we've got kind of a short council, uh, this afternoon. We're, we're down a couple of members. And I know that, uh, a question has been asked, uh, about voting and about whether or not this could be, whether it could pass at this meeting. So I've done, uh, some research as it relates to the vote. Uh, and what I found, uh, is a rule, uh, that, the, the way that I find the law is that's based on the time that I've had to look at it. So there's two different ways to look at, uh, or two different standards for requiring votes. There is a simple majority. Uh, and so absence of special language, a majority of the quorum constitutes an approved vote, unless it's, unless a higher standard is required by statute or, or ordinances. So what that means is, uh, the path of standard motion, as I found it, uh, standard motion requires, uh, a majority of the quorum that's present. Now, if there is statutory language or if we have language within our ordinances that requires a majority of the members elect or a majority in its specific language or a majority of, I use quotes, of all the. or a majority of, I use quotes, of all members of the council, then what you need is a majority of the five seats as opposed to a majority of the quorum. I have reviewed our, our ordinances. I do not find that language to exist anywhere here as it relates to simply entering into an independent contract agreement. Uh, I qualify that by saying I haven't reviewed the entire section of ordinances, but I've reviewed the administrative provisions and the like. The only place where I find the all-members' language in the statutory structure is in the provision that deals with passages of ordinances. This is not an ordinance, so.
You want a question? So how does it, how does it work with a conflict with that just?
So, um.
As you know, there is.
There would have been.
Yeah, there would have to be an extension.
So you can still be present for a vote even past practices we had to leave, when there's been a conflict?
If for further discussion, once a motion is made or upon, upon a motion, there Council Levine would have to probably move the discussion and considerations question.
Well, and I think it's just important to put it up because people have questions about that, about why we're doing a current meeting, so.
So that being, that all being said, this, it could be taken up tonight. We could reach out to see if Nashwauk, uh, or the Joint Power Authority would change their position as it relates to, um, the lift station and the. Monitoring and the work that we do there. It seems like it's important to get somebody, uh, in so that we can train our own staff, so we're not reliant upon other communities or other entities, uh, and get that process going. So we can either take this question up tonight, we could reach out to the Joint Power Authority or to the City of Nashwauk and see if they would reconsider their position, and if not, we could call a special meeting to address it where, you know, maybe we'll have more council members present, but those are the options.
So I have a question. How would this constitute a closed meeting?
No, this isn't a closed meeting.
No, if, like she said about stepping out of the room, how would that constitute a closed meeting? Because it's not a tiny part of the privilege.
You, you, you wouldn't be asked to leave the meeting because it would be closed? It would be because of the conflict.
Oh, yeah, I'm asking one because of the simplicity.
No. No, I agree. No. Okay, no, yep. So the, in, in addressing a conflict, the best practice is that the member with the conflict would actually leave.
Yes, okay.
Because the theory is if you sit in during the conversation, your, your, your presence may affect the way people are, kind of, discussed.
Okay, I was making a closed meeting.
No.
And I guess for myself, um, I'm listening to the whole thing. I'm a little bit taken back by this part still, like I'm a little peeved by this letter. Um, would that would be an understatement? I also recognize that Wayne holds a license that not everybody else does, and that we, that we need that. Um, knowing that, now have we reached out to anybody else besides People's Services and Wayne Arden? Is he the only one that exists with this license in Kewatt? Well, probably Kewatt, yes.
Yeah, um, I guess I can attest to that. To find operators that are gonna come and do this, that's a good one.
The amount is minimal, and I get that, so it, it, it looks, uh, fairly low to me, especially if you're saying that People's Services aren't available on the weekends. If it, if it storms, I'm assuming Wayne is making himself available. Should those.
His work, he can't be at the meeting tonight because he's at a school board meeting.
Uh huh.
Um, but is there, I was gonna ask you, did the, um, is there a certain amount, like an hour a day? Or is it so many, do, how many, is there an hour amount that they need prior to testing, you know? I didn't ask Wayne about that.
It's a hundred dollars.
A hundred hours, okay.
It's a hundred dollars.
The whole hundred hours. How many in a, period of time?
A year.
A year, so you're telling me so a year later before you, you have to have a hundred hours?
And you can take the test in a year?
And you qualify to take the test.
Well, what I mean is, is like you, you can do, um, a hundred hours in a month? Or it's like you have to, like, how does that work? Like, how does that work? They just have to do a hundred hours. It doesn't matter where, where it's at.
They just have to do a hundred hours.
Yes.
And so with him at this five hundred dollars per month, how many hours does he anticipate that he will put towards this? For training, for doing stuff at the plant? What does that look like?
I think, I don't know, he'd probably have to be the one to answer that.
Yeah, because I'm curious to know.
We also have to, um, consider Supervisor Sunquist. He still has work that he needs done outside of the sewer plant. So would it be okay with him to have them down there an hour a day or a certain day of the week? I think there's more.
There's bigger questions there, and, and that's what I'm saying. It's not like I'm a poet, I just, there's some questions that I have that maybe Wayne could more answer because he would know the answer to them, and I could certainly draft them out and ask him. Um, because I, I mean, I would agree. I don't think that there's somebody that's just gonna do this. There isn't, you know? Um, and we've learned in the past with People's Services what it looks like when we, when we don't have any parameters around something. Not saying that that's what it is, but we then get a big bill. So even with the training, like what's the training plan? What does it look like? What, what are these guys? I have a lot of questions about that, and then it ties to this. Because is, is it a little problem that we can address with one resolution and just say, okay, we can do this? Or is it a bigger problem that we have to address and we're looking at a whole different ballgame? We don't, we're not gonna know until he has that meeting. That's my take on it. I don't know on Tonya's opinion.
Um, and so he's just trying to help out with that.
I, I get that.
And that was his main thing.
Yeah.
But, you know, he tried before, didn't happen. He just wants to help out because now we're in a predicament.
Well, and we are with people, like that's, that's the thing.
I mean, if his license runs out by the end of the year, I'm guessing they need to be done by the end of the year.
Well, he's not gonna renew it for the City of Kewatt.
No, he's not going to renew it, no.
I mean, and I, and I understand, like, he's, what he's doing, and, and I do recall the previous meeting in which Wayne, um, stated that it would be of, it was no direct benefit to himself for doing this. It was more of like, hey, I live down here, I'm here, I could do it. Um.
And then the other thing I noted and, or I noticed in the letter is they have to have a call out. So they need to be set up on the dial when there's an issue. So whoever's gonna be down there, if there's a call out at 2:00 AM, it rains, you know, simultaneously, whoever down there. So I'm guessing if there is a call out at some point, Wayne would have to go down there with them.
And Council Levine, I, I had to make that happen, so I put Eric. Eric agreed to be that person until we know what we're doing here. So currently, right now, Eric will get the call, and then also Jason will, until we are farther along in this. And I talked to Jason and he was okay with that at that time, but.
And I guess, um, I know it said, you know, starting today, but we could wait until we get some answers from Nashwauk.
Well, and I'm just wondering if we could do these two together, and then we know what the ball, or what we're working with? Um.
But if they're gonna drop the ball on May first, that's in next week.
So we have to have all that stuff.
Then we won't have anybody.
So you tell me this, though, if, so this is different, so, and let me clarify. So if they decide that, I'll have you write a letter, we've directed you to write a letter, they say no. Would, would Wayne be doing this part of the letter too, once his?
Well, when he's overseeing them, they would have to do that maintenance. They would have to do it. He's just kinda overseeing the project. He's gonna direct them, um, you know.
So it's, this is why.
This is what you have to do, or this is, yeah.
Yeah.
Council Levine? In the past, Peoples had a logbook, and they, and we have it in the office, and they wrote down every day what they did, what they saw, all that. We purchased another one last week when we found out this was all happening. Wayne would direct them on what they're supposed to be writing and looking at in that book. I don't see that book. If Nashwauk does that currently, I don't see it, but, um, it's not, it's not just go down there and empty the bag.
Right. Yeah, and I, and like I said, I get, and I get that, and, um. So with Wayne, with this contract, then, um, and here's my last question, then Tonya can ask some questions. So him not being, uh, city employee, he's an independent contractor, um, what insurance, what, what happens if he gets hurt?
We have, we have to get a liability policy. I'm working on it. I haven't got a call back for the right insurance. I can't ask.
So general liability and workers' comp?
We don't worry employees, we, 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 workers' comp.
Yeah, so.
And that's. So just general like that.
Just general. So he would be covered and be better. Um. Yeah.
Yeah, that was, the insurance thing was a question. Are you, are we thinking that, or are we anything doing a special meeting next week when everybody can be here, or what are we doing? Or are we gonna do this contingent upon what we find out from Nashwauk? So it would've been a hundred and forty a week if we went through People's Services. Yep, and he said about when she comes to K-TAC, so that's two times a week.
Yeah, so that's like five, six weeks, though, and this is five hundred.
That's two hours, yeah, so. Eight hours a month, so.
And we need, we need somebody trained. We need our people trained. And yeah, that's, I just think that that's like one of the biggest things.
Yeah, we do have to have that. And regardless, whether Jason is doing it for, we still have to have someone with that collection license.
Right.
Is what Paul Christensen had told us originally. We have to have someone with that license no matter what.
MPC is saying that as well.
Regardless, yes. So.
So the, the question is, is not, uh, is, is, is if we wait and have everybody, everybody sitting at the table, or if we, um, and make a contingent, um, this information, or I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know. So we're gonna get a, uh.
Response?
Oh, it's one minute. I just feel like, I don't know why they picked me first. It's like, why wouldn't you just go to the end of the quarter then, or something?
It, it seems very odd.
At, at first glance, it doesn't even look like, it looks like the letters from the MPC.
Yes, and that's what I.
Which is why I called them.
Right.
Yeah, my only concern is that, my, my only concern is just me thinking, oh, because I go back and forth every which way, is waiting for the response that you already know you're gonna get, and then we wait to schedule another meeting. Um, I don't like the idea of not being able to ask questions. I mean, it does, I, I figured that there would be, um, I mean, I have specific, I have some questions, but I don't know that, I mean, it's gonna.
The service I could make would be very specific. It's like, uh.
Well, it wouldn't matter if you were here or not.
Oh, that's.
It'd be a perfect. Yeah, I guess I would just tell you, but it really doesn't matter because you can't be here. So more so is when Wayne can be here.
Yes.
Because Wayne would be the one that would answer the questions, and then what we would have, um, Councillor Johnson or Mayor Levine are both being able to be present, so.
Okay.
Well, unless, it's gonna be gone.
Oh, no, he's.
And, and Mayor Levine be here as well, or does that?
I mean, likely have a conflict.
So it would have to be Councillor Johnson and us two, and then Wayne.
I, I think.
Sure, yes, wait for Susan to get back, you know, and so.
And then decide.
And then decide. So if we.
Maybe you can find out something.
Yeah, and, I mean, I sup, I suppose that one thing that, that the council could do is, um, because what I'm hearing, the concern is what happens May first if we have zero resolution?
Right.
You know, and, and maybe what we could do, I mean theoretically, we could do a contingent, approve, basically approve a, uh, an emergency plan, that if May first rolls around and there truly is no resolution, we're not able to get together and have a bigger meeting. Maybe we do like a two-week period just to give some lead time.
Yeah, because you'll wanna have a meet before May first, which, you know, that's Wednesday, so.
I mean, the other, I suppose the other variable would be, um, and I don't know off hand, off the top of my head, what is the, what is the clerk's authorized spending limit within the city?
Two.
Two thousand, so.
So theoretically, if there was an emergency, but, but it's within the clerk's spending limit, then she could say, we'll bring in a contractor to cover maybe on a week-to-week basis until we can get a meeting together to get this going. And I know that it's not a, a desirable way to, to approach it in terms of planning or in, in terms of the, um, the contractor who's gracious enough to help the city, but it's not.
Well, I think if we aimed for, um, meeting by Wednesday of next week, we could, because you will be in contact with them, we could put a, put a stamp of approval or whatever we're gonna do on this, right? I mean.
Yeah, the, the, the letter will go out likely tomorrow by email, given the, the urgent issue and, and the pressing nature.
So I, I'm assuming that we have to have, um, Councillor Johnson here to schedule a follow-up meeting? Obviously.
Do you know when she's gonna be here?
I don't.
Uh huh. I believe she, she's coming back this week, Wednesday, I think, because she was planning on coming back Wednesday. So she will be back.
Twenty-four? This week?
Yeah.
Tomorrow?
Tonya, are you texting her?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Just ask her, I'm looking at the calendar because I have. Uh, so, yeah, she can meet this week, so.
This week?
Yep.
Thursday or Friday?
Yep. So whatever works.
So it's today, the meeting?
I think it's Monday?
Today's Monday. Their meeting could be Thursday.
Three days.
Thursday is, if you post, oh, you're gonna post it today?
Okay.
Then you can meet Thursday.
Okay.
So Thursday.
But is that gonna be an empty?
That's the, I can answer.
Like Thursday of next week?
This week.
This week.
This week? Likely not by Thursday, this week, because they may.
Okay, so even if we don't have an answer from them, we can at least meet the three of us and put a contention. We can vote in contention upon, correct?
Correct, if, let me say.
Yeah, unless we do it on Monday.
Let me say, it's, it's kind of a last resort.
I can do Monday to invite us. Can you meet Monday or Friday? Can you meet Thursday? What do you wanna do?
Thursday's better.
Thursday's better.
All right. But if he doesn't have one, he's probably not.
We have to have an answer, so we'll have to do Monday, but what time do you get back to work? I, I mean, I can, I can come early.
I have, I have a question. Who, who would be acting mayor at this point? Because the mayor isn't gonna be able to be here. I.
So I'm talking to him to see if he can even just meet.
Well, he won't be able to vote on it anyway, so regardless.
That's fine.
But.
We could.
Who would be acting mayor?
After the mayor broke temp, I think we would, we could just designate.
We can designate tonight, okay.
Okay, so.
I mean, Thursday or Monday? I think Monday would get more, more of a deal.
Yeah, and then, and like I said, as a last resort, it sounds like a, a weekly or bi-weekly contract in the event that we're left with nobody and face the potential of a legal violation or an MPC violation, it would be within the clerk's spending limit to, to make a temporary engagement to keep us out of that emergency.
Okay.
And then I would suggest changing the date on there to May first. When our meeting.
Um. What time?
Okay, okay.
And then.
Is that gonna be long?
No, it'll be fairly decent. Okay, so what time is today?
Okay, I'll make a motion to meet Monday, um.
April twenty-nine.
April twenty-nine at Ford Lock for a special council meeting regarding the Wexhinshire Independent Contractor Service Agreement with Wayne Levine, regarding the sewer plant.
And I'll support with one comment that, um, Mr. Levine being invited to the meeting.
Yes, but so we have some questions.
We should hire him.
He might be busy that day.
Okay. Um, is there any other discussion? So we have a motion, I counsel Mars, supported by Counselor Jivery, to set a special meeting regarding the independent contractor and the resolution for Wayne Levine for, um, supervising, uh, the professional services agreement for Wayne Levine for training on the collection systems license for four P M. on Monday, April twenty-nine, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you.
That's not much.
Okay.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose motion carried.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll need a motion to appoint an acting mayor, so I'll make a motion to appoint Tony Mars as proctor mayor at the meeting on Monday.
For purposes of handing any conflict votes?
For purposes of handing conflict. Handling any conflict votes. Is there support?
No support.
Any other discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Okay. So that was eight point six, okay, move business. Approve Fire Chief Morris to obtain two quotes for the fire hall roof for the A R P grounds.
I'll make a motion. To obtain, uh, Chief Morris to obtain a quote for the fire hall roof for the A R P ground.
You know, it's a quote-out, any other discussion?
Uh, I'll just add, so we got seventy-five thousand from the company for A R P funds, and so we just wanted to see, you know, if the quote's gonna be similar to what we had last time at like a hundred and fifteen, hundred and sixteen thousand, or like everything else if it's gone way up, so, I would like fifteen and twelve quotes.
It was required.
Yeah, well, yes, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, motion carried. Nine point two, discuss commercial dumpster rates for on-call service. And Billy has a letter in our packets regarding the dumpsters and, uh, dumpster fees and pricing. Um, so we did have, um, we did pass a resolution approving the garbage rates previously. Do you have that, Billy?
Mm-hmm.
In your packet?
Yep, I have that.
Okay, so, um, we were just reviewing this, so I think we were, um, we have some things on here maybe that needs to get updated, um, as far as the pricing goes, so I'll just kind of run through the list. So the residential cart rate is twenty-eight. The two-yard at sixty-five ninety-five should just be listed as a rental, two-year dumpster rental, um, and I guess that should actually have the twenty-five dollars added to it.
That's including twenty-five.
Right, but because that's the rate of the two-year dumpster, what is the rate? Sixty? Seventy-two. Right?
Yeah, seventy-two.
Okay, so.
No, seventy-two is every other week.
Yes, yeah, for a two-yard.
Yep.
So. Well, let's just go to the next one, two-yard, it says monthly commercial?
One twenty-eight.
Is one twenty-eight, but that's not monthly, that's one time a week, so that should be changed.
No, 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 they're charged monthly, but they empty them every week, the charge is monthly.
Oh, okay, so that's a monthly charge.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so. We should probably get this a little more updated so we know, because, all right, we were thinking that was every two weeks, or I mean every week for the. It's not, that's a month, okay, so these are all monthly?
Monthly charges, yes.
Okay, so the seventy-two dollars is a two-yard for the month.
Every other week, emptied.
And every other week pickup?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So how many, um, people actually have a bigger dumpster instead of their sixty-dollar?
Commercial or residential?
Residential, because that's the issue, right?
Yes.
It's residential, okay.
The only issue I'm seeing is the on-call residential versus commercial. Because there are some residents in town that have a two-yard dumpster and pay the commercial prices and have for years.
Okay, and that's now the seventy-two dollars?
Nope, this is gonna be the forty-five dollars, the on-call. Where you call when it's full and they empty it, whether it be once a week or once a, every week or once a month or whenever they call it, it's forty-five dollars a month, or forty-five dollars per dump.
Dump. Okay, so that's kind of like the people that rented them, then they got charged the forty-five.
They get charged the forty-five, but they get a charge of twenty-five dollar delivery fee.
Okay.
So I don't know if we should not have the on-call residential.
What's your recommendation?
Yeah. To, I think we just need to make it simple, like you said, just, because this is confusing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so either we just don't do the on-call at all, and you pay commercial rates. The commercial rate.
For a commercial, for those dumpsters?
Mm-hmm.
So you can do it every other week, or you can do it every week?
How often would they, do you know how often residential people get it dumped? Do they get it?
Right now?
Yeah.
Every week.
Every week, same.
So then they would have the option to do, okay, so let's get rid of the forty-five on-call.
Mm-hmm.
And go to, either they can do it every other week or once a month.
Because you still have to, regardless.
Or every week.
It's not really the on-call by definition.
Yeah, right, right.
Not like they're showing up in the.
So it'll still be every other week or once a week?
Yeah.
For a commercial.
For a commercial.
Because the residence, that's totally separate.
Yeah, and so if residents want that.
And that's probably.
They're gonna pay the same as.
They always have, yeah.
Okay, perfect, so yeah, just eliminate that.
Okay, that makes.
On-call service then.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we'll need a motion to approve that. Do you wanna, um. Oh my god, we're just making a motion, because all we're really doing is eliminate. Everything's staying the same, right, so the two-yard, um, that's listed as sixty-five ninety-five, we don't have that anymore then.
That's residential.
Well, they should be seventy-two, everything should just be the seventy-two.
The sixty-five, waste management charges thirty-five dollars and sixteen cents for those dumpsters.
Oh, but then we're gonna run into.
We're already charging a twenty-five dollar delivery fee on top.
But we're not doing on-call, so.
Residentials, we have to. Because those people are just renting it and they use it.
Oh, I see, that's what you're referring to.
We're just getting rid of these few residents that keep a commercial dumpster, they're gonna have the option of having it dumped every other week or every week, you don't get to call and say, and it's gonna be cheaper than the, the rest of the residents are paying.
Right, but what you said is the same thing, it doesn't get dumped when you call.
Yeah, it's dumped on that same schedule, so the only thing that, the notification is to you to let them know, but the garbage company is still picking it on the same schedule as the other ones, yeah, so.
Yeah, so it's every other Wednesday or every Wednesday.
So for instance, if I wanted to rent a two-yard, then you should just charge me seventy-two dollars. And that's it, no delivery fee.
That price didn't change.
Well, it was sixty-five ninety-five.
That's what it is now, sixty-five ninety-five.
That's what we're saying, to eliminate that, right?
I would, I would think that you would leave that the same.
And you got seventy-two.
So.
The only thing that we're eliminating.
But if, but if I wanted it dumped again, so I get a dumpster and I pay the seventy-two dollars, then they dump it whenever they come through town, and I say, I want the dumpster, I still want it, so the next time they come in two weeks, I'm gonna pay seventy-two dollars. Is that, each dump?
No, one don't bring these, no way.
No, so Claire, so we're, I think the problem is, and we ran into this before, it needs to be very clear on what the charge is.
Everything should stay the same except the commercial, the commercial resident people do not get the on-call service, that's the only discrepancy.
Explain the difference between the sixty-five ninety-five on here and the seventy-two.
Yes.
The seventy-two is for every other week.
Commercial or residential?
There is no every other week resident.
Okay.
Or commercial.
So commercial, straight up.
Commercial.
What's the sixty-five ninety-five?
Residents that rent a dumpster.
That rented, so not the same thing?
Not the same thing.
Got it, so the only thing that we're eliminating is the forty-five dollar on-call for residential that are basically commercials.
Correct.
Okay, I will make that motion. To eliminate the forty-five dollar option for residential that have essentially commercial dumpsters.
And I'll support with the current list.
I totally understand that, gotcha. That's what.
So we have a motion and support, is there any further discussion?
Thank you.
I have a question. So I'm gonna rent a dumpster.
You're gonna pay what you paid last time you rented a Pam.
It is that.
Okay.
So in all seriousness, although all these numbers are correct then?
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
So there really is nothing, okay, all right, nothing will change, okay. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, carry you. That's clear as mud.
It has been since the beginning.
Okay, well, we have another.
What happened to the good old seventy-five, eighty, ninety-five?
Nine point three, adopt the resolution approving Wayne Levine's seasonal recreation maintenance contractor at the Peter of Lippi. So he has applied for, there was an R P. that was in, sent out, um, he has applied to get the field ready, um, which entails dragging it and preparing it for the season initially, and then, um, preparing it for each game.
What's an R P? Request for a proposal?
She was.
Wait, who was our own applicant? There's no competition.
It's the only one, so.
So he gets to know her.
How many times a week does the field get used, that is curious?
Yeah, what is the schedule, do you know?
Do we know?
We don't have a schedule yet. Last year they did the T-ballers.
Every, like every, I'm talking every day.
Do they use sports? Well, there was, sports is not, is done.
Well, I thought they were not playing here.
So.
Were they not playing here because of the field? I don't know.
I don't think that we have enough kids in town anymore that play solely from Key Wad. I think it's more based on where these kids are coming from, and we have beautiful fields, minus last year.
Uh, last year was a hiccup.
I agree.
But we have beautiful baseball fields, so I think it's more about what kids we have in town and eliminating, um, things. I love the idea, I love that when he wants to do it, but I do think about it also, not Wayne aside, I think about it from the standpoint of we have these gorgeous baseball fields that are, they're, they're neglected, they look horrible this year, but we also have a gap and not, and nobody's using them, so it's wasted space.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Um, the other thing is now is this, so I know we've had money in the past in the rec, this is essentially a requisition, right? We have three hundred dollars a month, but we have the rec money, would that come out of here?
Yeah, he would be out of the rec.
Didn't get to use it, paying someone else.
Not yet.
No, but that's what I'm saying, so for, it's fifty dollars per game, so, I mean, if you're paying, if you're playing every day.
Yeah, I don't think there's games every day, no, no. We don't have a team more than.
Three hundred to do the, like, working.
Just to get it ready. If there are teams that are gonna play here, if not, um.
He may just get ready and then that's there.
Did the city previously, wasn't there a position for here?
Yeah, there is, yeah.
Okay, so there is history that you had some.
Oh, yeah.
It's not a new position, yeah.
Yeah, and, and that just kind of fell apart, um, and I mean, obviously, what we've done, our application pool, um, nobody is very interested except for me.
Which he's done it before, I mean, right?
He's had, he's been, has the time. Um. He needs something.
So I, so there's a couple of questions there, but it doesn't bear any weight on the, him doing it, it's just how often are they gonna be used? Because I think it lends itself to a bigger conversation of how are we gonna get our fields to be used? So that there's more of a reason to have somebody like this, because I still beg the question of, if we're not using it that frequently and, and we have to, and we've had positions like this in the past, yes, I kept that or whatever, but we also have people that get hired for casual labors that could easily go down there as part of their every other thing that they do.
Right, or the city clerk.
Or the city clerk.
Have to learn how to drag a field, chop a line, get the bases ready.
And I know they're limited, I know they're limited as they've stated with the M R stuff that they.
And I mean, obviously, they're gonna have to mow, which I know, I didn't get that last year, so that's, um, a speculation that they're gonna have to keep that mow if they're gonna be using it again.
So do we need to make sure that that spells out somewhere? I don't see that.
I think it's in the.
I thought I saw it somewhere, where it was.
It's on that letter.
It is on that?
In the letter, but now, we could add it to the resolution.
Oh.
Yeah, so I'm in favor of him doing it and then, um.
And just see how many games, you know, of games or if there's gonna be any?
Yeah, I would say that let's obtain a schedule first and make sure that we're actually gonna have games down there.
Yeah.
If not, so, um, I'll make a motion to approve, oh, with one additional conversation after.
I'll make a motion to approve hiring Wayne Levine, um, to take care of the, either both the baseball fields, um, as noted in the contract.
There's support?
Um, I wanna support it, but is there a timeline on this, is it just for this year? Or is this an indefinite, is it just?
Well, just this fall.
Okay.
This year, I mean.
Okay, I'll su- I'll support, do you have something to add?
Yeah, my next question was how about the general liability insurance, because technically he would be an independent contractor, so, right? He would have to carry general liability insurance, so.
Right, that would follow over the.
Mm-hmm, very interesting.
We have the, yeah.
Yeah.
Did we come up with insurance?
I don't think so.
I don't, but, um, I don't think much, I don't know if those things are over the top.
Yeah.
Um, well, just in case he gets hit by a rock. Okay, I'll be serious.
So we have a motion, we have a second?
Yeah, we have support. Is there any further discussion?
Do we need a start date?
Um, um, I guess.
Oh, beginning of the twenty-second, okay, forgot.
That's the end of twenty-second, but I guess whenever the schedule comes to me, I guess it would be there, yeah.
So any other discussion?
Wouldn't he be preparing the field now?
Probably in May.
Okay.
Because leaks don't start till June, right, usually?
Yeah, yeah.
Is there, is there a little leak board anymore?
So I don't know about this area, but I will say that the kids over in, in Hibbing have already been on the fields the last couple of weeks, so it would be good if he was able to, but he would know more about.
And I think they were cleaning out the building today.
Yes, today they were.
They're working on it.
Yeah.
So they got that ready and get the chalk over there. And it would be nice to know before we buy chalk if we're having any leaks here.
So let's finish this motion and then I'll make another motion directing the, the city clerk to obtain schedules.
Okay.
This one.
Any further discussion on the resolution?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I will abstain. Roll call, please.
Council Mars?
Yes.
Council Jivery?
Yes.
Council Levine?
Abstain.
Thank you.
Motion carried.
I'll make a motion for city clerk Beth Matthews to, um, obtain baseball slash softball schedules. And I'll support.
We have a motion and support. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Nine point four, discuss catalyst contract for the city of Kiwanon website.
The city of Kiwanon currently has catalyst.
Is this still Joe Rockus?
Yeah.
Do you like that website or?
There was a lot of money exchanged in that, so. And I would hate to see.
I can't believe how much it is, oh, that's a three-year contract, so.
It was very, it's very expensive, it was very expensive.
It used to be three hundred dollars.
We didn't budget. We didn't budget, yeah.
We haven't budgeted, okay. What do we do if we don't have a website? Can we do like a year at a time? Or do we have to follow until three year?
Roger, our I T person, recommended that we go with the two-year program, but not have them redesign our webpage till we can budget for it. I mean, this is for redesign in a four-year contract. That, that's a lot for, we don't have a budget at just yet.
There's a two-year?
These both say three and four.
I think it's one, two, and three under the Joe Rockus, but no upgrades. Oh, so we have to do a three-year contract?
And he recommended two.
But how can we do two if they're not offering that?
There's, look on the bottom, if we just leave it as is, it doesn't go away, if we just leave it as is, it's, it's cheaper. We don't have to do the upgrades. I think we need upgrades, honestly, we haven't, we need to figure all we are going to currently have first before you upgrade, um.
But do we want we appropriate?
Yeah, that's the main question, is that we have an option for less than three years.
They're all the same price.
Yeah, but just as soon as we were gonna bring the contracts. So you're paying here that one for a year ago.
And this expires on the thirtieth.
However, I spoke with him about that during our council meetings and as long as I know that we're discussing this, I'll call him tomorrow and then in case the board does not take action, nothing will happen, it just needs to be updated that we're looking at this. And maybe another thing would be to, to contact Roger from our I T and get a little bit more specific. He must be more knowledgeable on other opportunities or for other cities.
Can we table this until we do some more research? Uh, I would just like, like, what's the city of Kinne do or what is the city of Nanawatt do or whatever? Do we all use Joe Rockus or?
Like, most, most cities use it.
Um, okay.
But, um, we went out for our R F Ps in Virginia to have someone and they, they did.
Um, well, and to go off of what you said, I, this, this website was developed like three years ago. And I know that Councilor Johnson was very involved with its initial development, um. I just don't think we get through the video of the backwater, so I think more, a little bit more research, a little bit more conversation, we can table it, I think that would be good.
Yeah.
And see if we can get a two-year contract or if it ends in a three-year contract.
Or if we can do it, like, annually?
Yeah. If there's other options out there.
Very good. We need a more.
Can I get a motion to table the?
I'll make a motion to table the website discussion.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, motion carried. Do we want to press on this? Or? Is that something that we want to make?
Just reminding the council that you received the email today with the information for the
the lead service sign inventory, um, I believe the top half of that sheet is, no, that's just the letter that's going out to the residents, so that's a letter that's going out to the residents just informing them of the lead service sign inventory. And they can call or go to the website or use a Q R, Q R code to sign up to have one of our S C H team members go into their house to look at their service pipe. Like a five-minute appointment, so. That's going out, but either went out late last week or early this week.
Okay, sounds good. Any other questions or? Okay, thank you. Committee reports, um, next ambulance meeting is Wednesday at six P M. Next Fourth of July meeting is not May first, we have to switch that. So I, I said I have that. So I think it's seventeen. Fifteen.
Okay.
I think it's all.
Any other?
Discussing the date or the time for the ambulance.
All. Okay, commission liaison reports, anything, anybody have anything to put up? Department head reports.
Can I make a public service announcement or something so to speak? Uh, the fire department has been extremely dislating, um, with seventy calls already this year. But, um, typically when we're responding to the hall, we put on our flashers, so just a, um, a warning to the residents, if you see cars with flashers, please pull over so that we can get to the hall. So. Thank you.
Um, I just have a, we do have a street sweep, sweeping training coming up, is that May first?
Mm-hmm.
Your name, please?
Scheduled at the same time that the um, representative from McQueen will be coming and looking at our street sweeper to determine if it needs things or the condition of it.
Um, do they do have any comments or updates or? Everything's clean, protected?
Billy is working very hard with NuVay. Um, we're having daily training, about an hour each day to go over the new payment. Switching from P S N over to this, and it's gonna be very exciting, lots of opportunities for the residents as far as payments and notification.
And you got your web, or internet with the scanning, is that good now?
That part is okay.
Is there something that we have to do or are we?
He said it's a glitch.
Oh. So a glitch with the copier or?
No. Which, server? Internet.
Oh, with the server, okay.
We are having the copier though, um, they're gonna come because it's not feeding correctly through.
Oh.
It wasn't a phone. That'll be tomorrow.
So the server issue is something we're gonna need to look at, upgrading?
He said it's just a little glitch, sometimes you have to go in and refresh it and it's fine.
Okay.
Wasn't really nothing, he said.
Okay.
It was to me, cause you couldn't get your packet.
Anybody else have any? Questions, somebody? Okay. Motion to adjourn.
I'm sorry, motion. Second. Hang on.
Support? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.